Planning Commission, today is May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six o'clock and we will start our meeting today with the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Robert Knudsen will lead that for us.
Please stand and repeat after we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have two items on our agenda tonight, both of which are legislative, so we will be making recommendations to the municipal council on both items. We'll start with a roll call where each commissioner will state their name and whether they have any conflicts of interest with any of the, with either of the items tonight.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Danielle Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go directly into item number one. Development Services requests text amendments to section fourteen point three four point zero six zero, the location of boats, boat trailers and travel trailers. This has citywide application and Mr. Abinadi Borja from the City Development Services Department will present it to us.
Thank you for your time today, commissioners. We'll jump right in. Um, we've addressed several concerns, comments that have been made from you, from the cover or from the public from last time. I'll go right into it. The first one is the sewage wastewater. To make it more clear, we just left it one sent, uh, one sentence right here, just very nice and clean. The second one is the paving. Um, exactly what, what does paving mean and what examples, uh, we were able to give is found right here. That comes from our actual Provo City Code Section fourteen thirty-seven zero nine zero. It's the same thing that it says there and just put it right here. The third one is the setback, uh, which was one of the more, uh, discussed topics. The setback, we decided to, uh, match what the standard of public work says as far as their clear vision triangle there. We decided to put twelve and a half feet, um, and I know that can be discussed today. And then to show you an image of what that looks like. Thank you. So these are driveways right here. These are three examples of three different properties that do exist in Provo City, just randomly anywhere. Um, this is also a drawing that is very similar to the standard from Public Works from their drawing. But I included right here, the setbacks that are twelve and a half feet for each of the driveways, just really depending on if it's found in the front yard or in the street side yard. So that, just so you understand, this isn't drawn to scale. Um, obviously there are driveways that are shorter and there are driveways that are longer. But that's just to give you an idea of what a setback would look like and also give you an idea of where trailers can park and where they cannot park. I know the community, uh, with the recent comments that they've expressed, uh, would like this to be would like this to be shorter. Um, that, that is one of the concerns that they had. I just wanted to address it so that you know that's one of their concerns they had. But besides that, I feel like these have addressed the concerns from last meetings. And I don't know if you have any questions.
Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Borja? Mr. Whitlock?
Uh, one question, this is, uh, from the, um, one of the community letters. So, uh, if, if, um, a trailer or a boat were behind a fence and that, and that fence was within the current compliance of the current code, which I think is seven feet, would it be out of, uh, compliance with this or is this, or is the twelve point five feet only in the driveway?
The twelve point five feet is only in a driveway. That concern is mentioned right here where the fence was found in that community letter. Um, if the trailer is parked right here, uh, what is proposed is anything three feet or shorter can be parked in this area, anything more than that should be parked behind it.
Makes sense, thank you.
But can it be, but according to this drawing with the crosshatches there, it can't be parked behind a fence on that street side yard. Is, is that what you were also asking?
That was my question, could it be parked in the side yard if this, if they had a pad?
Cause with this drawing and that, the answer would be no.
That's correct. With this drawing, the trailer cannot be parked there.
But on the one on the left, it could be because it's not the street side, correct? On this drawing in front of us, the very furthest left on your drawing says side yard, but that one's okay because it's not street facing.
That one's clear because it's not the street side yard. That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Ms. Kendall?
So you're, you're saying that there's a fence on that right side property? There's a fence that goes all the way down the street side?
That community letter is showing that there is a fence that goes along that street side yard, that's seven feet tall.
In the picture they sent with the letter.
Correct.
That's the same one.
Yes, and they show that the fence stops around here somewhere. There's also a large, uh, tree or shrub that is well beyond that seven feet. We're not addressing this. What you see up here in the black, which is a triangle, we aren't addressing that. That is a public works standard that could be addressed to them. All we care about is that the trailers parked here are three feet or less.
What if they parked in the crosshatch area? Who would take care of that? Who would enforce that or allow it to happen? I think it's, I'm guessing that's kind of what we're all asking.
Well, I, I think it's because the corner lots have two front yards, right?
Just a special circumstance for corner lots because they both face the street.
Right.
Okay. I just follow up to that. Two things. How does the staff feel about those concerns? The, do you feel that your definitions and your illustrations adequately, adequately cover the questions that were raised in that letter? As far as, um, now I can't remember the specific one that I was wondering if it was. I guess that would just be a case where that person would. Okay, let me back up. Would that trailer, as shown in that photograph, up against the seven foot fence, if there were a trailer there? Um, would that trailer be parked illegally under the current ordinance? Because I think the person in their letter implied that it was legal now, but your ordinance makes it illegal. If I'm understanding the current ordinance correctly, it's still illegal now. Does, is, are you following what I'm asking? So the ordinance right now says you can't park in that front yard anyway. So
Right.
The person that wrote the letter to us claimed that the ordinance language change would make that, that trailer illegal. But it sounds to me like it's already illegal under the current ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you read too.
Well, the, the seven foot fence on, on that side would be illegal, right?
I'm not an engineer.
This is different than.
We're just trying to, to recognize whether, whether the concern is something that even matters in the context of this discussion. Because if it was already illegal, we're not actually taking, we're not making it worse. And I felt like what you had done addressed our concerns and I want to make sure that by addressing those concerns from the last meeting, that we haven't inadvertently made some of it worse instead of better. I think our problem here is that it hasn't been enforced consistently for so many years that there's probably a great swath of people throughout the city that believe what they're doing is correct, when in fact it never was. And so I want to just weigh that before we decide on something.
Right, and I, and I completely understand. Um, when I first started enforcing this years ago, there was more enforcement on my end personally as a code, as a code compliance officer. But since that time, we've noticed different issues just with that code. And last year into this year alone, this is why I wanted to address it so it's more clear, more equitable enforcement, we're able to enforce equally on all types of properties and not just certain properties. Um, so that's, that's why we're here today.
So then are there actually scenarios, perhaps the picture that we were sent today or others throughout the city that are currently allowed, that would no longer be allowed with the twelve and a half foot setback?
The pictures that were presented last time and the time before, all of those trailers do not have a sufficient enough driveway to park their RVs, campers, um, boat trailers.
But they're already not in compliance, correct? Because they're not behind the front line of the house.
Correct.
So we're not taking away their rights, they just haven't had it enforced on them.
The current code wouldn't allow those specific trailers to park in the front yard, whether it's the driveway or not.
And the new would not.
Other trailers would be allowed to park there and there were some examples given before. Um, but with the setback, that restricts a lot of driveways in the city and we understand that.
I felt like we were being more permissive with this language and I just wanted to verify that we were in fact being more permissive and not less. So, thank you. Does that, does everyone else follow where my confusion was and does that make sense to all of you? Okay.
Can I ask a question? So twelve and a half feet of, is, how did that, we come to that number of twelve and a half feet?
It's the standard that Public Works gives. Um, last time, uh, I went over it a little bit. It's not drawn here because it's not pertinent to what we're trying to do. It's twelve and a half feet by twenty-five feet. Um, we decided to keep it at twelve and a half feet just because of that standard. Obviously, if that's not something you feel that would be helpful with a lot of driveways out there, just because a lot of driveways are twenty feet, twenty-five feet, um, we could see a different number, but that's why we came up with twenty, uh, twelve and a half feet.
Cause that's what we were looking at last time was.
Talking, I mean, we threw out ten, we threw out the number ten.
I think we also were talking about twelve and a half simply because it would be consistent. It's already an engineering sightline standard, so we wouldn't just be making up numbers.
Right, but I would love to know if it actually still provides the safety that we need, only because we are eliminating most. You'd have to have a very long driveway in order to park.
And, and that's the thing, and that's why last time that standard was expressly said that it's a standard they have developed years and years and years through study and research.
Right.
Twelve and a half feet would be appropriate for that. But in this context, that eliminates a lot of driveways, so.
Which I go back to saying they shouldn't have been parked there in the first place. So I feel like we're actually opening up a lot of driveways by allowing them that wiggle room.
Well, is two and a half feet, like what, does two and a half feet get us to, somebody could put a boat there? I, I don't know how long people need.
I don't think it would be, I think it's either going to be enough or not enough. I don't think that two and a half feet is gonna.
So what most people would have is seven and a half, if we did twelve and a half feet, they'd have, it'd have to be a seven and a half foot unit. But if you added another two and a half feet to that, is that long enough for a standard work, um, trailer, for example? Or a boat?
That depends on the trailer. A lot of trailers are between twelve feet to twenty feet. A lot of construction trailers that are used that have been expressed by the public are within that, uh, footage. So most of them would not fit in a twenty foot driveway.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open this up for our comment. We'll start first with, um, any neighborhood or district neighborhood representatives. And each of those people who speaks will be given three minutes. And then, um, any community members after that will be given two minutes each. And just for the record, and so that all of you know, we did get a letter today from Annette Nureen. And so we've all read that and reviewed that. Any neighborhood representatives that would like to come forward? Okay. General public, if anyone would like to come up, just come to the podium and state your name and where you live.
Becky Badman, I live in Provo, Utah. Is that what you want?
Do we need an address? I never know, that's good, thank you.
Okay, so my question, you know, engineering's not here tonight. I just ran into Gordon as I was coming in. Um, this is the first time I've used one of these. Right here, you would, or even sometimes even right here, right? You'll see those seven foot fences and then they'll come along here. It's like they have to have those three foot fences here, right? But like right here, or even sometimes right here, you'll see a seven foot fence and a seven foot fence. So why are we allowing seven foot fences in this front yard? But not any kind of parking of boats or trailers or anything right here? Cause it seems like, you know, if a three foot is a visual, or we can visually see over, why, why are we allowing that? And why couldn't we allow some kind of parking here?
Thank you for your question. Any others?
Annette Nureen, Southeast Provo. So mine actually, when you guys were talking about like the corner, the street side yard, there's only really, at least from when I was reading code, is only one front yard. This foot, and then that other, if you go click on what the street side yard, it actually brings up side yard definition. And so to me, it seems like that that should be the side yard and there should be, you know, at least the, what is it, parking, you know, areas should be allowed along there. It seems like, at least in my neighborhood, people have been parking there for over twenty years. You know, boats and trailers and, and stuff, so just doesn't seem like the definitions are. You know, like you guys are saying, it's a front yard, but there's two front yards, but at least on the code and everything else defines a front yard as a full across the front. And actually I have issues with the rear yard and the definition of it, and shown on these corner yards, that it says that it's a full width across, yet your drawings don't show it that way. And yet the code, the definition says it is. And so which, you know, then would allow parking and stuff on that back area, but there seems to be some discrepancies there. So I think we're perpetuating that discrepancy and we need to figure that out. These are, you know, and I guess, I just have issues because I mean, like the, most utility trailers or, and like enclosed ones are usually around fourteen feet, uh, you know, at least the smaller of them. And so that's twelve and a half feet just does not allow those at all to go. And the three and a half feet, like a, just like a dump trailer, other type of things, those, I have a little short trailer and it has like one foot bed. It's three feet tall. And so any kind of work trailer is over three feet, you know? Even just the ones that are open, so I have issues with that.
Thank you. Thank you for looking at all that information and bring it to our attention. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and then this is where commissioners will discuss this. Commissioners, do we feel like we've seen enough iterations of this? Do we feel like we want to ask staff to change something again? Do we like it enough to send it forward with a few suggested uh, tweaks? Or do we want it to come back to us before anyone else looks at it? Do we hate it? Do we love it? How do we feel? If I missed any options, feel free to add them, but those are just brainstorming discussion starters.
Uh, you didn't list ambivalent.
Oh, well, if you're ambivalent, you need to keep reading, my friend.
I didn't say I wasn't, but like, it's an option.
It is true, maybe overwhelmed. I, um, I feel like we're allowing it in so many more spaces that I'm still comfortable with the restrictiveness of it. But I would like to make sure that the definition of front and side and rear hasn't caused unnecessary confusion. Um, I think there's going to be a backlash regardless of how restricted this is, simply because it's been ignored for so long to some degree. And that, some people may argue with the fact that it's been ignored, but I think the, well, the pictures showing the violations are evidence enough that there's a misunderstanding throughout the community that this has ever been a rule. It's unfortunate because there's going to be a lot of trailers parked on the sides of houses or in front of houses that have been there for a long time and someone's going to be at a loss regardless. Um, I do wonder about parking behind a fence. If the fence is legal, why can't something that's behind it be legal? If our main argument was the sightline in the driveway for safety issues, that sightline probably doesn't matter as much in a side yard that's twenty-five feet away from the corner. But what do you think? Mr. Whitlock?
Well, I want to say thanks to Ben and I, uh, and the staff for doing, uh, multiple revisions on this and, um, it's really good work and definitely along the lines of what we've discussed. Um, I did have the same thought as you, or I kind of wonder like, and, and I know, I know you, you don't want to handle every single edge case in code, but you know, I think it's a very valid point that if it's behind the fence and you can't see it anyway, like, why couldn't I park it there? And that just seems kind of weird to me.
Ms. Kendall?
Oh, I was gonna say, I agree with that, actually, what you said that if the fence is legal, why can't you park behind it? The reason for the setback is safety. So, um, if there's a fence there, then to me it makes sense that we're not dealing with the same safety issue as if it's parked in a driveway where people are trying to back out of a driveway next to it and can't see around it. And then you might, you know, clip somebody on the sidewalk or, so if, if changing that distance doesn't allow you still to park a trailer, because apparently fourteen feet is more like what the utility trailer is, then even changing it to ten feet doesn't do anything for those people. So I think we're either saying, okay, park it clear to the sidewalk or not. And because of safety, I don't think we can say park it clear to the sidewalk. I do think that's an issue, it really is, because, you know, two driveways, look at the two driveways next to each other. If you've got one part clear to the sidewalk and you're trying to back out from the other one, you cannot see around that. So, um, to me, it's, the setback is important, it is a safety issue. If your driveway is not long enough, I don't see how even shortening that setback is going to help. Because we're, you know, even adding another two and a half feet only gets you to ten feet.
The one thing I can see that, um, is an advantage with the twelve and a half foot based on, versus not being able to park in your driveway at all, is that if you are parked along the side of your garage, it can stick out now. Whereas in the current ordinance, it has to be tucked all the way behind the front of the house.
Right.
So it does give, it is a little more permissible, but short driveways will still not have an option.
And I think you're right to point out that it never was an option. We're not making it more restrictive.
We're actually making it more of an option to some degree.
Right.
Um, if we were to say something along the lines of, um, we're okay with it being in rear and side yards if they're behind legal fences, legal height fences, um, is that the height standard? Can't have a fifteen foot RV, fifteen foot tall RV, but you could have a seven foot tall boat hidden as long as it's obscured behind a fence? Or do you follow like a shed requirement where you're going to have a twelve foot shed behind, three feet away from the property line? So you could have a twelve foot vehicle parked, like how do we, what, what suggestion for language, if we like that idea, do we send to staff?
Well, maybe one other question is, do we address that here? Or do we just take the issue of parking of boats and allow the side yard discussion, does that happen outside? Does that make sense? Like, is that somewhere else where we define side yard and fences and our fences? I mean, it feels like at some point, we could expand the we could expand the scope of this beyond where we want to be.
A, a side yard discussion would be a different text amendment in the ordinance. In ordinance, that's right.
Yeah, but I think if we want to send something forward that kind of reestablishes a rule for trailers, I think we would want that language to be all inclusive. So we would want to figure that out before we finalize it. That would be my, my thought because otherwise there's this scrambling, there's, and then we're still left with, some of these cases are enforceable and some of them aren't. And you may have a house that has one in a place that's okay and one that's not, or one that's enforceable and one whose language we haven't refined yet. And so we still are where we were before.
And one thing I want to say, if I, if I misspoke, um, I, I used to work for City of Indianapolis 20 years ago, but back then in, in that municipality, two, a corner lot had two front yards. And so I don't know if I'm misinterpreting or misapplying that with it, that there is a street side yard that has a totally different definition. So that when we saw the picture in the community letter that showed the corner lot with one of the sides having a seven foot fence, that that, that that was permissible?
Right, so in, in our code, we only have one front yard unless it's a property that has a road on both adjacent sides. So on the, you know, on the north side and on the south side, then it would have two front yards there. That's the only instance where it would have two front yards.
How do you determine which one is the front? Is it the one that the door, the address is facing? Cause some of them have driveways on the side and their house faces the front. So how do you label them?
So that's changed over time in the code. There was a time where the front was deemed whichever one is the most narrow. And now, yeah, I, I don't recall exactly, but I think it's the address point or the front door. Um, but it, it is defined in the, in the code, which one would be the front? Um, and so, and then the other is considered a street side yard. Now, comments have been made that that's not a direct defying term in our code. And that's right. It's not in our definitions. However, in our definitions, there are some images of examples of yards. And in that, the street side yard is outlined the way we have it in our image here. And so a side yard that is adjacent to a street is not considered a front yard, though it is handled very closely like a front yard when, in regards to parking.
At, at the minimum, then we, we, we would want to include a, a new definition of street side yard as a a separate ordinance text amendment so that we, so that the image that was in the community letter that that, there's no question that that is allowed.
Right, that's definitely something we can look at and bring in a, a different point in time.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not arguing we should do this, but I do think that we could address the concern without getting into the whole definitional debate around what a side yard is, because if you look at how the text amendment reads, it basically says, you can't keep any of this stuff in the front yard unless you meet these conditions. And then it gives a series of conditions. You could add a condition that says, or unless it's obscured behind an illegal fence. That seems very reasonable and doable.
And you said legal fence, not illegal fence, right?
Uh, I meant to say.
I heard a legal fence.
A legal fence, not any legal fence.
Illegal fence. Okay. That's a good suggestion. Are you coming forward to speak to us? Okay. Um,
Yeah, I'll.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I'll just say one. I don't know. I, I personally feel like, like our duty as the planning commission is we, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be so bold to say as we're the experts, but on some hand, in some ways, we're considered the experts in making a recommendation to the city council. Um, and I, I'm comfortable keeping the 12 and a half based on health and safety and engineering standards.
Widely accepted standards, yeah.
And, um, if we, we, we make our, I feel comfortable making a recommendation, like accepting this and, um, the political backlash, I'm content to punt to city council.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is you feel like you've seen it enough times and we can rec, make a recommendation with more confidence than we had before. That it's almost there, but not there yet.
I, I do.
You think it's there?
I do think it is there.
Okay.
Um, with the, I guess with just the one caveat that we do ordinance text amendment at a future date, separate issue, separate item for street side yard. And I want to make sure I didn't completely ignore your suggestion. Um, but yeah.
Which was?
Just trying to understand where do we define that as it relates to this issue and that they are separate issues. And I think, I mean, I think if we put the, or legally constructed fence, presuming that we're okay with something behind a legally constructed fence, and I think that probably does it. But I, I do agree with Commissioner Gonzalez that we need to look at probably a definitional issue there.
Well, then my question for that is, um, does, is our intent to have the trailer obscured behind a legally obstructed fence? Or to have it parked behind one? Because trailers are taller than a seven foot fence in most cases. So I feel like we need to take that into account. You can have a structure several feet behind a property line that is quite high. My neighbor just built a 12 foot shed and it's legal. So we could have a 12 foot motor home right behind a seven foot fence, which essentially negates the rule for the seven foot fence. If you can park something right behind it, that's much taller. So I just want to make sure that we're using currently existing code language to decide how we want to allow that or not allow that.
But, but that's on a side yard, right? So to me, does that matter? I mean, that doesn't matter.
Well, if it matters in the code that the fence can only be that high, then maybe it should matter in the code as to what goes adjacent to it. That's, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't create a problem that the fence rule was supposed to prevent, which is giant walls going up to block the neighborhood view.
Well, I, I don't think that's.
Isn't the argument, I mean, you can make the same case for like a 20 foot tree adjacent to the property line. Like that would theoretically defeat the purpose of a seven foot fence.
Does anyone from staff want to explain to us the logic of a seven foot fence and whether we should care about it?
So the only restriction is that anything over seven feet would have to have a building permit, permit. So there isn't a limit to how high it can be, just as long as it can meet building requirements over seven feet.
And then what are the rules? Like a shed can be 12 feet as long as it's at least three feet from the property line. So are there other structural rules that would help guide whether this would be a logical thing to be able to park right up next to a fence?
For a street side yard, I don't believe there are any allowances for structures to be built closer to the property line than the main structure itself.
So that would mean you couldn't park anything between the house and the fence if it was?
If, if we're using the same standard as a structure, then correct.
On that side.
We would, it'd be exactly how we have it hashed out here. Nothing in the red hash. You know, diagonal lines would not be allowed if we're treating a trailer or RV as a structure.
How about a tree? There's no rules about planting tall trees in that area? Just to play devil's advocate here about.
So the only restrictions with trees is having it trimmed a certain height above the sidewalk.
And what about in the line of sight, you can't have trees or shrubs planted over three feet or something like that in that black corner?
Um, yeah. So there's only a, a three foot height for certain shrubbery. And then trees, again, the canopy cannot be lower than a certain height.
Mr. Whitlock?
Um, so if you just kind of step back and think like, why, um, if you like, in, in this image on the right, why do we have those red hashes? My thought would be it's generally aesthetics, um, cleanliness, et cetera. And so like, um, I, I guess when I made my comments earlier, I wasn't imagining trying to make a permissible a 14 foot RV. I was more thinking like work trailers, um, boats, that would be obscured completely by the fence. Because at that point, I'm like, why would you care? Why would anyone care? It's not a permanent structure. It's not in anyone's vision. And so it just feels like we're not allowing something that I don't see any harm being done to the community by having it be there.
Where do we draw the line? Cause they can park their RV behind the house as long as it's not on that street side yard. It's still ugly. The neighbors still might hate it, but it's not between the house and the fence. Like, I feel like I don't want to micromanage someone's trailer parking. I want to come up with a rule that's super easy. So everybody can understand it and it's very consistent to enforce.
But what's the, what's the reasoning then at all to have these hash marks in the front and street side yards?
Visibility? Just by the current visibility standards in general?
But a seven foot fence doesn't, what, are we talking about views or, I mean, if it's visibility for safety, then the seven foot fence is not visible at all. It's irrelevant.
I think we shouldn't worry about, I, I think we should allow side yard parking. And I think we shouldn't worry. If there's a fence, they can put anything behind that fence.
Does it have to be behind it though? It's my, I keep coming back to, or does, is it only legal if it is obscured by the fence?
Well, yes.
Cause what if you didn't pay for a fence or it's a chain link fence? And you live out in a part of town that doesn't have fencing everywhere, but you have your trailer parked there. Is it legal or not legal?
Well, haven't we said side yards is legal?
Well, okay. What about the corner one?
Well, you gotta give the corner property a side yard. I think that's, you just have to say they have a side yard like everybody else has a side yard. And as long as it's not the driveway.
Or in the visibility triangle? The, from the corner?
Right. So as long as they're not, I mean, let's say they park that trailer, you know, just into that outside of the driveway, but behind that fence. Let's say there wasn't even a fence there, but they had a pad there where they could park it. They can't just back it out right into the street. They'd have to back into the driveway and then come out. So safety wise, I don't see as, that as a problem. On a side yard, there's not an entrance in and out on the street, right? As long as there wasn't an entrance in and out on the street, because then it's a driveway. Then you're in this, so the driveway limitation takes care of that. So if you're parking in the side yard and you're not utilizing the driveway to park it, then I think safety wise, you're okay. And if there's a fence, fine. And if there's not a fence, fine. I don't know.
Staff, how do you feel about this logistically, um, getting rid of that corner side yard restriction on parking these? I, I think that's what you're suggesting is that treat all, decide which one's the side yard and treat them all the same, whether they're on the street side yard or a regular side yard. Right?
Consistency is what we're looking for. So whether we allow it or don't, you know, it's up to you and ultimately the council to, to decide. Um, the, the images in the letter that was received today, um, show a little bit different than what this image on the right is. Um, so if we were to imagine that the property line were to go across here and this were a driveway of the neighbor to the south, then in that image, there's a fence that goes right along here and up along here. And that causes sight visibility issues at this corner of any vehicles pulling out of here for pedestrians on the sidewalk. That's definitely a concern. Um,
But that's not an illegal fence by standard because it's not on the corner?
Right, by, by our fencing standards, it's a completely legal fence. And so I agree if, to the point of if there's a fence that's allowed to be there, how much more obstructive in sight and safety is a trailer? It, it's not. So.
So you tend to agree with where we're headed, which is maybe the side yard restriction as long as we keep that sight triangle clear. Maybe that's more consistent and uniform? Or am I putting words in your mouth?
Um, let me just make sure I understand what you're saying. Are you talking about this triangle here?
I'm, I'm talking about, um, it sounds like we can't do anything about that triangle because there's no code violation in the fence.
For the fence, correct.
Um, so I'm saying that the street side yard and the side yard maybe can be treated the same way. Instead of having these, you can't park here slashes on, on this drawing. Based on what we're discussing.
If, if that's how you'd like, you would like to see it, to have the street side yard be consistent with the interior side yard, we can definitely make those changes. As we, you know, and either come back to you or take it to the council with those changes.
I'm iffy about it. It feels kind of worms to me. But I'm also good with it in other ways. So Mr. Knitson, I feel that you have thoughts that you want to share about trailer parking and you can say no if I'm wrong.
One thing that I, we haven't talked about that I'm kind of passionate about is on this page three, where it talks about officers have found properties where camper trailers are being used and are rented as a separate dwelling unit. In addition, some of these traders have discharged their waste onto the property. I'm appalled by that, that it actually happens. And I think that's one thing that we really ought to be strict on. Is if it's going to be part of this, I think we really ought to be strict on enforcing that.
And you weren't here at the last meeting, I don't think, but if you look at page six on item three D, we actually had questions at the last meeting about how clear the sewage and black water rules were, and they simplified it for us so that it just comes right out and says, you have to use a dump station. Which just basically means it's immediately enforceable if there's a report. So it could still be happening illegally, but now we have some teeth. Does that address your concern? Okay.
And I thought that was, it's a really good improvement. It's very clear.
Yeah, that's probably one of the most egregious health and safety things with this.
Okay. All right. Here's what I feel like we've accomplished in the different iterations we've seen. We've now addressed that the issue that is most important is that this is a safety issue, a, a site issue. There are aesthetic issues that some people may be passionate about, but um, as far as trying to make something uniformly enforceable, we're tending to look away from those as less important than the safety issues. Um, we've dealt with the health safety issue. We've dealt with the sight line safety issue. Um, and now I feel like we're talking about consistency and enforceability. Um, to have we, one of the questions we had at our last discussion of this was, um, what about trailers that are currently stored in backyards? By current ordinance standards, that's illegal because they're not on a pad, or it's totally legal because, okay. Um, have we done anything to make, you know, by, by the rules that we've discussed in this current iteration, have we done anything to make it so somebody is now going to want to move it to the front instead of keeping it in, like we talked about last time, except for maybe the pavement?
I, I think that was a, I think that was an improvement since the last iteration, number two, any boat, recreation vehicle or trailer may be parked on the side of rear yards.
Okay.
It's really clear, straightforward.
Um, one thing I did wonder, it says that if you use gravel, it has to be stabilized with a stabilizer grid. I dare guess that 90% of the people who use gravel as a parking pad have no stabilizer grid underneath it. So is that just something you hope nobody complains about? Or do we lower the standard? Or do we just take that on as a battle as needed?
I think we take it on as needed because they're pulling it directly from another section of the code. So for us to rewrite it, yeah, I don't, I don't think we changed it.
That's what I felt too, but I just, it, it came up to me as another like, ah, it was going to be a nightmare to enforce. Okay, so that's good. Um, I have some language suggestions. I don't know if you want me to just throw them out just in, um, on page six. Um, one B, I thought it might read better if the phrase or property line, if there's no sidewalk on that last, um, line of one B, if that was in parentheses. Because when I read it, one half feet from the inside edge of sidewalk or property line, if there's no sidewalk, um, it, I just sort of thought that that whole thing was if there is no sidewalk instead of property line, if there's no sidewalk. So I don't know if that was useful. Um, and then also number two on that page, it felt to me like it was already, that same language was already contained in number one. Am I wrong about that? This says, any, in any zone, boats, recreational vehicles, trailers may not be placed, kept or maintained within the clear vision area of a corner lot. And then it says in number two, any boat, recreation vehicle or trailer may be parked on the side or rear yards. So maybe that's based on what we've just talked about with the definition of side yards, that those two maybe are the same thing and they could just be combined in the same language? Or do they need to have the separate restrictions in A, B, and C? For one and not the other? For one and not the other?
To make it clear and concise, they would have to be separate.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that wasn't, um, confusing because it sounded very similar. And then the other, only other thing is in four, at the very, the very last line on page six. I think that's where it starts with figure fourteen point three four. I think that's meant to be a heading for the figure on the next page. So I would just make sure that was bolded and obvious that it's a title. And then the other suggestion I had in both that figure, um, and somewhere else that I saw it, oh, on page nine where it says attachment three. I would call it restriction, restricted parking locations for boats, recreational vehicles and trailers. I would just put parking in there. I don't, it doesn't actually mean anything different, but I feel like since that's what people refer to it as, that was a suggestion. And I don't, I won't be offended if you don't hearken to that. Okay. Commissioners, are we ready to make a motion? Any other questions for staff before we do so, if we are ready? Almost ready? Do we want to review amongst ourselves what recommendations we would make if we did make a motion? Define the street side yard to correspond with the image? Or maybe that's beyond that? We don't need that anymore, do we? Just say site. Do we need to clarify the side yard definition in anywhere, anywhere? Commissioner Kendall says just take the hash marks off the street side yard and make the language reflect that.
Does that require the fence though?
I don't think, I think we decided that if a fence was allowed, then a trailer should be allowed, but that doesn't need to be part of our language because it's just allowed. We're just saying it's allowed, right? As long as it's outside of the.
Right, if it's on the side yard, there's no driveway in and out of that side yard. That's why it's side yard, not driveway. So then they'd have to get to a driveway to get out. Right?
Right, so, to be clear, there are some street side yards that have driveways on them. That's how, that's why that, um, property on the right is depicting that it's, even though it's a street side yard, there's still a driveway there for that property. Um, but yeah, they would somehow need to access a driveway to get out onto the street.
Right, but it's being parked, not in a driveway. It's being parked in a side yard.
Right, so if you want that to be allowed, then we can remove the hashing from the street side yard and adjust the language to allow it as well.
I feel like as long as our language reflects clear vision out of the driveway, which is expressed by twelve and a half feet setback and then the clear vision off the corners, we should be attacking the most important clear vision areas. Right, commissioners? So the nitty gritty of fences or side yards should be eliminated by that language.
Yeah.
Mr. Whitlock, you have a thought?
Um, it's probably not a well defined one or, uh, developed one, but, um, by doing that, we're, we're not affecting how street side yards are changed elsewhere. It's just, it would just be contained in this ordinance, right?
Correct, this would only apply to the trailer parking.
Mr. Pepperoni, do you have wisdom to bestow upon us?
Just a question, um, so what I heard you say was that a trailer then could be parked, if you look where I'm pointing, all the way up to this. You wouldn't wanna do that, right? The trailer would have to stay behind the front setback of the house, even if it was in the side yard, right?
Well, we're not requiring that on the driveway though, so that is the question. It doesn't have to be behind the front line of the house if it's in the driveway, but.
But if it's in the street side yard, you're, what I'm hearing you say is you might want to allow
Okay.
to trailer parking in the street side yard, correct?
And then it'd have to be behind that line. You're just removing the hash marks of the street side yard.
It would have to be behind this line, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Okay, that's, that's a good clarification. So the language could say not allowed at all in the front yard, except on the driveway, behind twelve and a half feet from the property line. And it would be allowed anywhere in the street side yard. Is that a good clarification, Mr. Whitlock?
Is the, just so, you know, iterating on the fly here, um, with the, I'm just trying to think of how this written, would the gravel et cetera be required? Cause right now it's like, if it's a backyard side yard, you could just put it on the grass. Right? Isn't that how?
No, in the current ordinance.
That's how.
Can you park it on the grass in the current, current ordinance if it's ba- behind your house? I think we talked about this last time. It was only if it was on the side that it had to be on a pad of some sort?
No, no, that's what, that's what number two says, because number one is only referring to if you're in the front yard or street side yards.
The current ordinance only allows, sorry, only allows for certain trailers to park in the front yard. And certain trailers, uh, well, every trailer to park anywhere, pretty much. Paved, not paved, that's what the current ordinance says.
As long as it's behind the front line of the house.
Yes, for all trailers and then some trailers, like utility trailers can park in the front yard.
Just because there's no restriction at all stated.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So I, I just, I, 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 if I, um, I, I just, um, this is a tricky one, because I think if I wanted like the original think, correct me if I'm wrong about that here, but one of the original issues this ordinance was trying to solve is there, were these massive, uh, um, rigs on side yards, street side yards on grass. And it was just, yeah, like creating issues for resident, local residents, right?
And your concern last time was that if, if they now have to be on pavers, are they gonna move them somewhere more visible than in the legal grass spot that they are in the back out of sight of everybody too?
Yeah, so I don't know, I just, I just remember that was what, i- am I wrong with that?
You're not wrong. That, that was the original intent to restrict trailers from parking in certain areas. The only reason right now that the street side yard is hashed is because under fourteen thirty seven zero eight zero, we don't allow cars to park there unless if it's within a driveway that leads to covered parking. That's why we decided to mark that off for the street side yard. Now, if you wanna go to the direction where we take that out, yeah, we can do that. No problem. But that's why that's marked, so you understand.
That's what changes in this is that it states now that you have to be on a surface. So it doesn't have to be pavement, it can be gravel. But you have to be on a surface now, instead of just on the grass.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna allow the side, the, the street side yard, there has to be some sort of pad there for it, not cement necessarily, but some sort of spot for it.
We're saying that we can't park cars there, right?
That's the confusing part.
That's, yeah, exactly.
Also, how do you differentiate between a junk trailer and one that I'm gonna take camping next week? Because I feel like this opens up a can of worms for storage issues, which are also violations. Junk cars, non-run, you know, non, uh, registered cars can't be parked in that front setback either.
But that's handled by a whole, totally different ordinance, right?
Yeah, but I just, for consistency sake, if somebody says, oh, it's my trailer. Is there some, is there language we're missing here that defines it has to have been taken to a campground in the last year?
Great question. And that comes up to each officer's discretion, obviously. Part of our investigation process is to be able to get in contact with the homeowner and say, well, I see that your trailer has stuff in it. And they say, oh, I recently went camping and I forgot to unpack. Or I'm going camping tomorrow and that's why there's stuff on it. Or it is junk and we can enforce on it and say, hey, could you just remove that off of your trailer and put it somewhere else?
Okay.
As what code.
And if the trailer doesn't have any rubber on it and it's just axles on the ground, you can just define the trailer itself as junk and ask it to be removed? Like if it's not in working condition, it's no longer considered a trailer? You know what I mean? Like you can then enforce it on the junk side of things?
Right.
Okay. This is still way more permissive than I like, but I feel like it's accomplishing a greater intent and is much more enforceable than the previous one is. So even though I don't like it, I would be okay, I think recommending it.
And so come back to the fence issue, I guess. I think there is an aspect of, uh, you know, a tidy or orderly neighborhood. And if we have a side, street side yard that doesn't require a fence and we can park any number, we can't park cars there, but we can pick a trailer there, that seems a little out of whack. Uh, so I think the, the fence may not be there to obscure the entire, whatever it is, but it does kinda clean things up and.
So I'm hearing you say if there was a fence, you'd be okay with it, but if there's not a fence, you're not.
That's, that's kinda where I'm leaning right now, just.
Others, thoughts on that? Whether it's a street side yard or a regular side yard? And you don't care about the height as long as there's a fence?
This is where we get so many different machinations that.
Well, this is, this is where, for one neighbor, they might not care. For one person, they may have a huge property setback that doesn't make it a nuisance to them. But if you don't have a fence between you and your neighbor, or the fence you have is, is not opaque, and your neighbor by law can park a fifteen foot RV and two boats back there. The raccoon set up house, like, I don't know, I guess that's enforceable on other things, but I could see that that would be very annoying. Mr. Whitlock, share your wisdom and insights.
I just find this one tricky. It's like, yeah, i- i- yeah, it's a boat, a work trailer that's behind a fence, amazing, feel great about it, a sixty foot rig. And you could have.
Some of those RVs are huge. They are towering.
Yeah, that's where I just, I, I, it's like, cause you could, in this ordinance now, you could have a house, two side yards, you have a corner side yard and your real side yard and two sixty foot rigs on either side. And it's just, I, I know it's private property and I, it's complicated, but yeah.
That's where, that's where I'm like, I'm comfortable with the direction we're headed, but there's still a lot of what ifs that would be not okay with me, but would be permissible in what we're proposing. And so I'm like, how do, I don't know if we're there. I think unifying the side yard definition is a step in sort of the right direction. But it's also missing the aesthetic part of it that we've admitted is not the number one priority, but is still the intent of the original ordinance.
This property has, this is one property that has the street side yard and a regular side yard.
Mm-hmm.
So could you say if there is no regular side yard available, then the street side yard could be used if there's a fence?
Well, there should always be a side yard available because they have a ten foot or eight foot or fifteen foot setback that's required with construction. You can't, unless it's like a performance development where they can build right up to the property line. There will always be a side yard. So, if they don't have one, then we've got other problems.
Well, this one doesn't have one though. This one has front yard, street side yard, rear yard.
That is, it has a side yard.
That's considered the side yard, that's.
Over by the carport, there, it says side yard in front of, between the house and the driveway. I'm sensing we're not ready yet.
Well, I think the addition of a fence, if there's a fence on the street side yard, that would make sense to me.
Does it have to be an opaque fence? Does it have to be seven feet tall? Can it be a rock fence made out of boulders they dug out of their yard?
I, I'm coming back to.
There's a lot of ifs here.
I think I'm coming back to the way that staff has proposed it here. I could get talked into something with the fence, but I think I like the way that they've done it.
Because most of the properties are not corner properties.
Correct.
I, 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 same, I agree. Um, I think part of the, the issue that we're having such a struggle on is that for so many years, um, trailers, RVs have been parked illegally in the front yard. Um, in the driveway. So all the, all the images we've had have shown.
Illegal.
Illegal things. And they look clean. And we even had one citizen last meeting say, oh, that one's okay. I don't mind that one in the driveway, even though it's in the front yard. Um, I don't mind those ones because they're, they have clean yards and they have newish trailers. If they had old, if they had dumpy yards and old ratty trailers, I don't like those. But, but there's this disconnect between, I don't know for how many, how many years the, the previous ordinance was, but it, trailers and RVs have, have not been allowed beyond that house frontline. And they've, they've just been.
For at least thirty years, for as long as I've been in my house, that's been in the code.
But now we have something that is going to be, uh, easy to uniformly enforce on, which we appreciate. And it's still, to your point, allows more per- permissive spots to park. And it's, it's not gonna cover everything, but that's okay.
Ms. Kendall?
Well, and I think the front yard issue, we're all good with. I think it's just that corner lot that has a side yard, street side yard. That's, that's the only question mark in my mind.
But you've actually made me feel better about that by pointing out that there's another side yard.
Well, it's not like we've just taken their whole. Access that other side yard though. You got a grudge in a carport. I mean, there's no access to that.
Well, not every property's constructed the same way, but yeah.
Right, but I guess I'm saying if you don't have a usable side yard and you have a usable street side yard, then I think we should allow that.
Well, let's play the other way. What if you live in the middle of the block? And both of your side yards are hard to get to. So we give them a third side yard because we were really sad that they couldn't use either their side yard. I mean, it's just an unfortunate circumstance, I, I guess is what I'm saying. Maybe it's a silly example, but just because they can't get to their side yard and we're gonna give them their other one as a bonus, you may be in the situation where neither one of your side yards is good and you just simply can't park your trailer and this is gonna make you mad, but it's still the rule.
Well, that's why if we say, if there's a fence, I think that takes care of it. If there's a fence already there, I don't see why we're worrying about it. Let them park it behind the fence.
The one thing that I just don't like about the current amendment is if I have a boat and it's a hundred percent hundred fence, I don't see why you couldn't park it there. But I understand all the like difficulties and making, but I just feel like it's, it's annoying because it's like, no one can see it. It's not messy, it's not untidy, or even just a small like work trailer or whatever, but I do think that if you have no fence and it's just a side yard in our neighborhood and there's a sixty foot rig that's taller than the house, which there are images of, um.
By rig, do you mean like a semi or are you talking like an RV that's just huge?
Like, like, like one of the camper trailers that you put razors in. Those type of huge things. I mean, I think there's something to be said about that argument for sure. I don't think there's anything to be said about the argument of you can't park a boat or like a small trailer behind a fence. Like that just seems silly to me, that you couldn't do that.
So can we just solve this by saying if you have a fence on your street side yard that you can park it, that it will be treated the same as a side yard? There's a fence, a legal fence there.
An opaque fence.
Right.
And it has to be, see, that's the thing, cause a fence could be a three foot fence. You don't have to build a seven foot fence. It could be an Irish rock wall with vines growing over it and it's legal. And that doesn't obscure anything.
You could say it's obscure, if it's obscure, I don't know, that's probably really a difficult judgment, cause you probably can't use that language. I was gonna say if it's obscured by the fence, but that's probably really tricky.
You could build a chain link fence with morning glory winding through it and it would be opaque. So I just feel like it's opening a can of worms to, to go there, but it's also solving a visibility problem.
Right, does the phrase obscured behind a legal fence, solve it? Obscured behind a legal fence.
Mr. Pepperoni?
So the, the entire rationale of if I have a fence there, then why can't I park behind it scares me? Because with that same reasoning, somebody could say, I can fence my whole yard, so why can't I pave my whole yard? The neighbors can't see it. I got fences up. We've never allowed yards to be paved and I hope we never allow all yards to be paved, right? So I'm kinda worried about that reasoning. Then the direction this last comment is going is what I'm really scared of, is allowing these and somebody having a twelve foot trailer and now we have a twelve foot fence to obscure the twelve foot trailer.
That's a good point.
That would be horrible. So, I'm just nervous of the direction this is going.
Thank you. What if we forward a recommendation to the municipal council to, uh, prove this as it is with our, um, suggestions that streets facing side yards be addressed and let them, ah. Be addressed and let them, ah.
This street facing side yard be. Defined in the, in the subsequent text amendment.
It's already defined though, we know what it is.
Reference, cross reference.
I don't think it's the lack of definition that's the problem, it's just, you know, we've had community comments, people have mentioned just this issue, but I understand. Um, Mr. Pepperoni is also saying.
And that's where, that's where I'm playing devil's advocate here, throwing out our different fence types and things that could be hidden behind them because. That's where it becomes less enforceable.
Yeah, I get, I get what, I get what's being said. At the same time, it's your property and it's beyond a fence, you're not, I just don't think you're harming anyone by parking your wo- work trailer there, so I don't know.
You can also back it around the back or go into the other side yard, so I really don't feel like we've made it so somebody can't park. It just means maybe they have to park less things. Because they can't use that yard, I don't know. Does anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Knutson.
Uh, I would make a motion that we send a positive recommendation to the municipal council. For item number one, Development Services requests text amendments to section fourteen point three four point oh six oh. Location of boats, boat trailers and travel trailers, citywide application.
We have a motion by Mr. Knutson to forward a positive recommendation for approval to the municipal council for item number one as stated. Um, do we have a second on that motion?
Hold a second.
Mr. South has seconded the motion, do we have any discussion on the motion? Did we want to add any language or have we talked ourselves out of making any language modifications?
I, this is uh orthogonal to the main issue we've been discussing, but I thought your suggestions were very on point. As far as readability of the amendment.
The ones that I just.
Yes, the small, yeah, the one that you ran through.
I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion because that was more language of how you wrote it, right, just grammatical things. Okay, so we probably don't need to modify the motion for that.
Okay, I just wanted to re-raise that, I thought those were great suggestions.
Thank you. Okay, um, seeing no items that are no wait discussion on the motion. We will um take a vote on this, we'll start with Mr. Whitlock, we are voting. Whether we agree or disagree with forwarding a positive recommendation for item number one.
Aye.
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 I will also vote aye. That is six votes in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number one. Item number two, Development Services requests an ordinance text amendment to title fifteen. Land use and development to add procedures and requirements related to agricultural protection areas, and this also has citywide application. And city staff Brandon Larson will present this one to us.
Good evening, uh, commissioners, glad to be with you. Um, so we have another text amendment for you. Um. We do have some agricultural land in the city and and we've. Have some general plan and other policies that that protect or that. Um, you know, we've established some policies. Uh, saying that agricultural land is is valuable and something that we need to preserve. Um, we. What we have before you tonight is a tool to kind of help with with some of that, so. Um. And i- if you look at it, most of the land that's been developed and most of the easy land's been developed and. What we've got left is uh land that, you know, needs some help with utilities, land that's up on hillsides. And so forth, a lot of this land uh currently has agricultural operations on them. And uh, for instance, recently you had um the Smith Provo. Uh, annexation come before you and and that's uh. Uh, going through the annexation process, there's an agricultural operation uh being conducted on that property. And so what what we have here is uh an ordinance to. Maybe I'll back up, so the state code allows for agricultural protection areas. But when you read through the state code, there's some things that the state, that the city, if if the city is going to establish an agricultural protection area. There's certain things like uh minimum area that they are going to require in an agricultural protection area, we need to establish those things. So agricultural protection areas are important because what they do is they. Um, they give legal uh protections to agricultural operations. They uh protect them from nuisance claims. They uh make it, they they can potentially freeze zoning. And so I'm going to dive into a little bit of that, this with you, so as far as like what protections are are. Are afforded by agricultural protection areas, you can see them there on the screen, they. They give strong limits on nuisance claims, of course, there's some limits on that if. If there's a safe, safety, health or or health and safety issue, then then there may be some limits on on uh. How strong those nuisance claims can be or nuisance protections are. Um, uh, and you can see there, the second point there is uh. Um, we we've got, if we're going to have agricultural protection areas, we've got to make sure that uh our ordinances uh. Continue to uh, you know, they continue to keep agricultural protection, agricultural operations viable. That uh we we keep them healthy and operating. Um, can't change the zoning on on uh property that's in an APA unless we get permission from the property owners. And uh seen that uh, seen that issue come up a time or two in my career. And then another thing that happens when we have APAs. Um, a subdivision would have to. Put a note, a notice on their, a note on their plat saying, hey, if you locate within three hundred feet. This subdivision is located within three hundred feet of an agricultural protection area and agricultural protection areas are afforded. The highest uh priority, highest priority usage uh or priority. Priority use status, and so just kind of a heads up to to people, like if you're going to to live here. And all of a sudden you start getting flies, just know that you were warned that there, this property is protected from. Has some agricultural nuisance claim protections. Um, state code. Sets out a process where you get the property owners. Um, you you get a handful of property owners, they define the boundary that they want protected. Identify the the parcels, take it to the municipal council. Go through a lot of noticing, kind of like an annexation, there's a ton of noticing with these um agricultural protection areas. And um one of the interesting thing with these is. Obviously, before it goes to the the council, it'll come to you, but there's another board that that it would go to. And that's the uh what's called an advisory board, and that's a board that's established at the county level. And that's usually a board of of people with agricultural uh operation expertise. And so. Um. During that time that, from the time that the application is submitted to the time that it goes to the council, it it's going to come here and it's going to go to that advisory board. You're going to have some criteria by which you review the application. Um. And then it goes to the council for for a a final approval. Um. So that somebody could, um, so there are state code requirements that already establishes process. But like I noted earlier, there's just uh, that there's a few, one or two things that that have to be established. At the s- at the jurisdiction, at the uh local level, at at the local jurisdiction level, at a city level. And so that's kind of what we're trying to do here tonight is. Trying to, number one. Say, okay, if you want to do an APA, uh, application, agricultural protection application, you're going to go through the state process. Um, we, this proposal established. A- a- as you go through the state code language, it talks about the city council being the one who processes this application. But we're trying to say, what we've proposed in this amendment is that Development Service actually pro- uh processes these applications. We establish mi- a minimum requirement. Uh, for inclusion of land in agricultural protection area, we've uh proposed twenty acres rather than forty. Um, so Utah County, you know, they they ha- deal with a lot. They have a lot more land in their jurisdiction, they're dealing with big agricultural operations and theirs, their minimum is forty. Whereas you look at other cities like Spanish Fork and Saratoga Springs and they're, they're looking at like a twenty acre minimum. And so that's what we're proposing is to go with a a smaller twenty acre minimum. Uh, uh, that you'd have to include. Uh, in an agricultural protection area. And then uh, of course, this proposal uh kind of sets up uh. It kind of nods to some of the protections in the state code. Um, such as nuisance claim protections, uh, the freezing of zone, uh, your zoning and. And special noticing like on plats. So what this proposal, here's some. What this agricultural protection proposal does and doesn't, it it does facilitate approval of APAs in the city. It does establish minimum acreage uh for APAs in the city. It doesn't repeat the code requirements in the state, I actually did write this once. Um, see, Spanish Fork and Saratoga actually pretty much verbatim just. In- incorporated the the state code requirements, the. And I had written it that way once, but the city attorney said, no, let's just highlight the things that are different. And we'll, we'll nod to the state code requirements, I think there's a lot of wisdom in that, so. You'll see that in the ordinance, that it just basically says you gotta meet those state code requirements and here's a few other things uh pertaining to the city that you need to be aware of. Um, and of course, it's going to establish a new title, a new chapter in title fifteen. So uh here, here's the proposal, we we have a limited number of definitions, the advisory board is that uh. That extra board that that uh an APA has to go before, and again, that's established at county level. So we need to to reference uh it advisory boards in our, in our um. Proposal here, need to establish a definition of agricultural production. Um. Because again, this uh ordinance is protecting those properties in agricultural production. And you can, you can see the other, other um definitions there. Um. Trying to think of any highlights here, number two on the second page, subsection two of section forty. Um, that is a provision that you can, so if you've gotten, um. And I'll show you a map here in just a minute, but if you've got an agricultural protection area. That is just on the periphery of the city, but outside. You would only, you could add to that agricultural protection area with a minimum. Uh, with a minimum of ten acres, so you could propose an agricultural protection area. Of ten acres in the city, as long as it was adjacent to another APA that was just outside the city boundaries. So that's a another addition and that is within our right to propose something. Uh, the state code says that it's left to our jurisdiction to decide those things. Um. And then. Um, that subsection one under cha- uh subsection one in section fifty is. Basically saying, giving the council the ability to say, okay, if we're. Um, going to approve as we're, you know, if they're, if they're given an agricultural protection area to review and consider. They have, they would have the right to exclude. Um, areas that were planned for roads or uh. Utility corridors and so forth, commercial uh development, and so if they're, if those. Areas or if those land uses showed up on an official city map, this, the uh. State, the municipal c- council could say, you know what, we, we're going to exclude this land from, from your APA. Because we've already, it's already planned for a state road. Um, so that's, that's one of the things we built in here that's extra from the state code. Um, subset or section sixty uh again establishes those nuisance protections. We, uh, title seven is where you see a lot of nuisance uh discussion in this, the city code about nuisance uh. Nuisance provisions, and so we're specifically stating here that uh agricultural operations are protected. From those nuisance claims as long as they are operating a sound agricultural operation. Uh, that that doesn't, unless it, unless they're doing something that is. Uh, has a direct relationship to public health or safety, then then they're going to have a, some pretty strong protections from nuisance claims. Um, number two is kind of a nod to some of the protections in the state code. And then number three, um, we could have left that out, um, because it is actually in the state code. But I was afraid that if we left that out, that staff would forget about that note. And would never get applied any plats, so I thought it'd be easier to to just include that, so. Um. There's a lot more requirements, they're, they're not. Ab- i- if you look at the state code, APAs are not really, there's not a lot you have to submit, it's just a lot of noticing. And it has to go, an APA has to go several meetings before it gets approved, so it's. It's a lot like, i- in that respect, it's, it's kind of like an annexation, there's not like a lot of documentation that has to be submitted, it's just a. Ton of noticing and meetings. Um, and uh, yeah, just a lot of procedural pitfalls with with this application. Um, here is a map that, uh, so the yellow are those uh agricultural protection areas. That are existing, you can uh, you can see the uh. Here, down on the bottom, those. Uh, that Smith Provo annexation is, is right in this area here, so. Um. You, you could see in these situations, someone could propose according to this proposal, a a tenth. Uh, acre, andic, uh, agricultural protection area and kind of piggyback on one of those existing ones there. So there's not a ton uh of APAs around our borders, but but there are a few. Uh, the biggest one being uh, looks like it's the Provo River Delta area, so. Um, with that, uh, staff would recommend approval of this uh. Application, it's been a lot, uh, it's, it's fairly streamlined, especially from where it originally was. We've, we've just really touched on the the most important things that that really aren't in the state code, and so this. Really, we think will really help facilitate. Um. Agricultural protect, approving agricultural protection areas in the city. Gives us another tool to help preserve agriculture, those agricultural lands that are left and 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 we just think it's uh. You know, the, I think it's in everybody's best interest to support agriculture and and support local food sources, so. With that, I'll uh end and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I have three.
Yeah.
One is, how is sound practices defined? It, I I don't see it in the definitions, um, feels a little ambiguous to me.
Yeah, that's a a good point, I see your point there. Um, the, the other thing too is you, this. It's going to go through a process with you, but maybe and more importantly on these applications, it's going to go to an agricultural advisory board. They're going to talk about the operation and that would probably be better suited for a board like that to discuss. What sound, so it's going to go before a board that that has experts on what sound agricultural. What a sound agricultural operation would be, just looking in the state code to see if it's defined, because I don't remember. That being defined there either.
Um.
Seems like it'd be a really long list.
It, well, it could be, but um as it is, it's. You know, it's open, seems open to interpretation.
Yeah, they don't define it.
The second thing would be, what do you do about a change in agricultural operation? Because like, what if you start out with an orchard?
Yeah.
And then, you know, three years later, they want to change it to livestock. And there's a different.
Nuisance.
There's a different nu- like, it would be allowed because it's, it's agricultural protection and they could do anything in ag. Uh, which includes that, but it's a a change in the operation and production. Uh, which includes that, but it's a a change in the operation and production. Could could bring a nuisance to where one wasn't before. The third thing would be, um. Planned roadways, parks, utility corridors. Like, before we approve that, is is that lined up already, do we have that all lined up already? Um, in those proposed APA areas, because some of them look really huge. Like the, the, um.
The delta?
The delta area and some of the others. Um, they don't, obviously, they don't have roadways now, but. But if they did in the future. You know, or, uh, an APA would pre- would prevent a roadway going in?
This actually, section fifty actually gives the city the right to say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna give you that protection on this.
After the.
When it's declared. One of the other things too, that kind of ans- might answer two and three a little bit is these things. Um, have to come back for a twenty year review. It's mandated by the state code, so at that time you can review the use and see if if we want to continue. You know, if it's wise to continue the agricultural protections, it's a it's a twenty year review. I know that. They get re-reviewed at the time, if a part of an agricultural protection area. Is in the county part, so part of it goes into a city and parts left in the the county, it gets, uh, the county, the part in county gets re-reviewed. That's the only one that I can think of, that's the only time I can think of in the state code where it talks about a re-review. You know, if. I'm trying to think of another instance in the state code where it addresses, because we certainly don't address it in this proposal. Addressing what to do if the use changes. Uh, twenty year reviews, the only one I recall.
And the, and just, um, this, this ordinance takes a minute, just sets up the framework, we're not approving and. An APA just yet.
No, no, this just sets up the the framework, and frankly, the framework's already there at the state level, it's it's an allowed use. We're just trying to to kind of tee it up a little better, make it facilitate a little better here in the city.
Is there any language here that I'm missing that would imply if it was an APA? For example, on this annexation that's currently in holding, um. If it's already an APA outside of the city boundaries, does it automatically become one, or does it still go through that same review as though it was never one before?
It would, uh, it would come in, I've seen that happen when I've worked at Utah County. People knew they were, their property was about to get annexed and they'd hurry and like go put an APA on it. Because it survives the annexation. But like I said in the state code, when that happens, it triggers a review on the land that's left in the county. But it 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 will remain in the city.
So since this property, um, on the north, that's with the yellow and green crosshatches, since that's already an APA. Would this be a moot point when it comes into, if if the annexation goes through, we wouldn't have to review that annexation APA? Because it's still, it's already. It comes in as one.
Yep, the only time we'd review it is at the twenty year mark, we would find out when it was approved. Um, at the county level, and then we would review it at that twenty year mark.
So I have a question about the noticing, I love the idea of saying, hey, if you're gonna build a residential area close to this, just beware, this is. Something that you have, what about areas like this one on the north that, um, is in the process of awaiting annexation? Where it is coming in adjacent to already residential areas, there's no one to notify and say, hey, if you're gonna build here, just just know. So is that step skipped there? Or it's it's only for new develop, new residential development and we assume that the other ones already know what they.
That's only for new Platts.
Another question I have is in section sixty, item one, it says that, um. Basically, the nuisance will be overlooked unless. That activity or operation bears a direct relationship to public health or safety, is that unless, is that determined by complaint? So it's it's considered not to be a nuisance unless somebody complains about public health or safety, this is on number one of page seven.
Yeah, um, yes, I would imagine that would probably come, uh, that would be probably addressed at a, uh, through a complaint.
And then just to review, so we understand. The advisory board, is that something that if Provo adopts this language, that Provo would then establish their own? Advisory board, or would we defer to one that already exists on a county level?
County level.
And then how does that timing go through, do they apply for it, uh, through Provo City and then Planning Commission reviews it? And then the advisory board reviews it and then city council, or is it advisory board, planning commission, city council?
Um, so the advisory, it'll go to the council last. The state code says, give specific timing for when those reviews have to occur. And they, let me pull that up here really quick. It is, there's a forty-five day. Forty-five day requirement, within forty-five days after receipt of the proposal, the planning commission shall submit a written report. Within forty-five days, the advisory board shall submit a written report, so. Both the planning commission and the advisory board have to review this and have had to have had a public.
But there's not an order stated of who reviews it first? I'm just, I'm asking that because I feel like. I would rather kind of like the design review commission or the the department heads all review it before it comes to planning commission. I would rather have the experts in agriculture review it before the planning commission ever sees it. So that we are reviewing the experts before we make a decision or recommend something to the city council.
I can see the value in that, I I don't think it'd be.
I would recommend adding that language to to basically state a process that's clear cut. Instead of, ah, we'll get to it within forty-five days and then we'll compare notes.
The only thing I'm thinking of there is you you meet more frequently than they do, so that I. I'm thinking of logistics and holding up an application. They meet once a month, they then you meet, you know, bimonthly, so.
And we have to be subject to the forty-five day standard on the state? Well. If we meet more frequently, then we can just hear it on the heels of them. You know, they could hear it the day before or whatever.
But I I do see the wisdom, we can certainly propose that and and try it out, if there's an issue with it, we can always come back and. Suggest, hey, this isn't working, but I I I think that's probably wise.
All right, commissioners, do we have any other questions for Mr. Larson about this? Mister Knutson?
Down here in fifteen point two four point oh four oh one, page six. You talked about, uh, it was forty acres for the. County, but the Provo city's reducing it to twenty acres.
Yeah, making it easier to to get into one of these because. Our agricultural land is just so much more minimal, we wanted to, uh, my thinking on that was just. You know, we've we've got less land and. Uh, our operations are smaller, and so we wanted to open that up to to as many operations as possible.
Could it be even reduced smaller? Cause you can, Greendale, of course, notoriously, you have five acres, or five acres, five and a quarter acres for the home. Could that be reduced so that someone that wants to come in with that size could could make it?
Yeah, I, twenties, uh, where I started, I think that was based on looking at what others, other two cities had done, but. Um, I, again, my big thought there was trying to open it to more operations, we only, you know, we don't have a a ton of them, but. Yeah, I I I think ten may may be doable.
In that case, would you take out the language for if it's adjacent to one, then it could come in as ten because that would no longer be necessary?
Yeah, I think that's true, we could just get rid of subsection two and just make it ten, I I I would be supportive of that.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yeah, I'm I'm wondering what happens in a change of ownership. Cause I I actually, I I do agree with lowering the standard.
The size can be.
To size to preserve, um, and protect those areas. But I'm also concerned like what? What happens in in a change of ownership where? You know, where someone no longer wants the agricultural protection, or they have to wait the the twenty years?
Yeah, so this gets recorded against the land, there's, there are recordings that occur. I used to see those happen. What happens if the the use changes? Is, uh, is something I just don't know right off the top.
What if the use doesn't change and it just changes ownership?
The ownership, it runs with the land, the the right to have an APA runs with the land.
Could the, could somebody sell it as a sheep farm, for example? Continue sheep farming, but then want to change the APA and just make an application to remove the APA? Or does it have to stay there because it's longer lasting?
They can remove it.
They can just not be an APA anymore.
They can certainly apply to have the APA removed. Yeah, there's, there's no doubt about that, you can.
So it's basically only a protection area if the landowner wants it to be that, it's not like a community protection, not like a open space.
In fact, there's, there are state code provisions, uh, in, um, that address, uh, removing land. Um, they were actually in here before, but we took them out. So.
While you're looking at that, is, I'm, maybe commissioners consider if anyone would. Interested in lowering that. That twenty acres to something less.
That was my, as well, my comment.
I I don't know what a good floor would be.
I would say ten and just combine requirement one and two, so that it doesn't matter whether there's one adjacent or not, we're fine with ten. But I don't know how that works with the state language. Also, Mister Knutson, did we interrupt your line of questioning, or was that the only question you had?
The thing in there about the nuisances. It's it's good that that's in there. I've had. You know, there's just certain things with agriculture that that don't always jive with what people next to you like. Like four times a year, I have to get up early in the morning. Before the sun comes up. Ray K while there's still dew on it. I've never had anybody complain, but you always wonder. You know, if they're gonna complain about being woke up. Six o'clock in the morning. But there's just certain things like that that have to be done with agriculture, and it helps if you know that. That just because they have a little nuisance about it, a little heartache about it. That it's not gonna stop you from performing your work.
Absolutely, I've, you know, you you've probably seen stories about. Land up in it, in Lehigh and and, you know, Lehigh and other areas have developed quite intensely and. They're developing their agricultural operations and all of a sudden these people move in next to them and there's flies everywhere. And they're they're freaking out about it, and I I think it's good to protect these longstanding operations. Uh, from those, uh, from nuisance claims, it does say in here, uh, that there is an established process for removal. Um, the, the. Yeah, there there is a process for removal of annexation, uh, or APAs, so.
I I have a question, um, could you go, or like, I think it's the first slide in your presentation? Uh, right here, yes. Can you say more about bullet point number three, I didn't, I I might have missed it in the actual, um, text? Or is that more from the state?
That's a state, there's nothing in our state code or in our city code, it's already just established, it, it's basically saying that. If there's an APA, so if the, if if the, um, Smiths come into the city. And they come in at, you know, A one five or whatever they come in at. The city, once, once they come in, we can't go change their zoning without their permission, we cannot change. Any APA, uh, APA property with their zoning without the approval.
And it's only on their land, not not the zone, okay?
So that can create some challenges, I've seen those challenges too, but yeah, that's, it does freeze the zoning, and so it's. It's interesting because. Um, I saw an instance where the. You know, that that can be a good and a bad thing, because I saw a situation where the. The jurisdiction I worked for had, uh, loosened up some laws on setbacks. But because there were just a ton of APAs where where I worked and and. All these property owners still were stuck with the old setbacks because of, because their their, um. Zoning was frozen, so.
Okay, any other questions for staff? I feel like we were asking more questions than probably people expected, but I think it's because it was a new, a new topic, so thank you. All right, I don't see any neighborhood district representatives, but I see possibly some public comment. Does anyone wanna come address the commission? Welcome back.
I'm Jenny Smith, um, fifty-four forty North Canyon Road. Um, our fifty acres is been an agricultural protection area for about eighteen years. And just some things that you might not be thinking about or or might not be common to you because agriculture isn't your background. First of all, um. At least from our perspective, as as fruit growers, we have a lot of regulations, we have the federal. The federal, the state, the UDAF, the food safety law, and and. So if you're not aware of that, you might think, well, you can just go out and do whatever you want, and it's pretty hard to do that for very long. You get, you you you'd get curtailed in a hurry, which is good, because you've got people to help you, you've got people to turn to. And so I think that advisory board who would look at it and say, okay, are you, you know, viable agriculture, are you single agriculture? They could, um, help that the the concerns you might have about that. Because they're aware of the regulations through there, so that's one thing that might be useful to you, understand. The other thing, which Scott could probably say better than I could, but that that, even though ours is. Our agricultural protection area was forty acres and, you know, above. Um, it's very possible, and people do it all the time, great growers that we know. You can have a very successful operation, depending on what you're growing or producing on ten acres. So if you're a smart grower and you know what you're doing, and you do it right, you can certainly do it on ten acres, and so. Even though that doesn't necessarily apply to us, I encourage that because we know people that are in that situation, maybe not necessarily. Maybe in Provo, but in, you know, in the state, and it's kind of sad that they don't have those kind of. Um, you know, support from their, from their area. So I think those are two things that maybe you might not be aware of that that might be helpful.
Thank you for sharing your expertise with us, thank you. Any other comments?
Scott Smith, I'm Jenny's other half. There's a couple of questions you had. That, uh, about the ten acres and twenty acres, I think is pretty standard. As Brandon has said, there is, uh, your sister city to the north, Orem. One of my very good friends, that would be, uh. Jim Crandall, he's on about ten acres, that's on Center Street Hill. If you haven't tried his apple juice, I recommend you do. It's a wonderful operation, it's a family operation like what we're doing. And Orem City granted him an APA with ten acres. I don't know if anybody knew about that. Uh, but that is in an APA, that was one of the first ones when the law came out in the nineties. We have fifty-one acres and as Jenny was saying. Probably with an eight-foot deer fence, well, it keeps elk and deer and moose out in the winter time mainly. There's twelve acres that's in the deer fence, but in production, there's probably about ten acres. You can raise a lot of produce on ten acres, we have row crop, we have. Starting right now, we'll have apron, apricots, cherries. Plums going into peaches in July, uh, apples, pears, pluots. You know, through the fall. We probably produce sixty ton of fruit on that. And you can feed a lot of people, and I'm not talking produce, I mean, produce is something that we just, we're getting into with the plastic. We've got a mulch layer that you do the row crop, we're kind of new at that, that's been around a a year or two, but. We've got a mulch layer that you do the row crop, we're kinda new at that, that's been around a, a year or two, but. On ten acres, you can raise a significant amount of produce that you could sell. And that's what we're looking forward to doing here in the futures, is marketing more in Provo. And, uh. That plays to what I think, uh, Mr. Gonzalez asked. Or who asked it, I can't remember, Knutson or Gonzalez, doesn't matter, I guess, but, uh, it was a good question. Uh. I'm in favor of that as a grower, and I'm part of the Utah Hoard Association, I don't know what anyone else thinks about that, but I think it's a good idea. Give a, give a guy a chance, whatever they're doing, and, uh. It's not a problem getting property out of the APA, as I understand, somebody asked that too, I won't get into a lot of that. Other than what I've said, and if anybody had any questions, uh, firsthand, I'd answer.
Mr. Gonzalez, how's the question?
I, I do a little bit, do, do you have any, any insight into what sound practices means? Like, i- is, is that an industry term?
Uh, sound practices, I'd call it reasonable prudent, uh, Jenny addressed that. Uh. I can tell you where there was a wonderful farm, if any of you have been in Provo for twenty years. It was Dick Bur's farm, the year he passed away, he went to college with my dad, they were buds all through high school and. Went to college till World War Two broke out. And I had the opportunity of running that orchard. And they had the respect and the love of all the neighbors, that was on Columbia Lane, Ivory Holmes has built the development down there. And, uh, it was a great introduction to, uh. Uh, a Utah State Extension Agent named Adrian Hinton. And it plays back to what Jenny said, I mean, we're, you're regulated, you can't just run out and use anything or spray anything. I would say the word if, if I'm using legalese, is reasonable and prudent. And the APA, the EPA, the, for the APA, you're regulated that way too. But the EPA, the FDA, the Utah State, and I'm registered with the federal government, and there's guidelines. That you have to follow, and water, this is how critical it's getting, there's a water standard too. And it's, it's getting now with the, what do they call it, the. The little bacterias, uh, I can't think of the name, doesn't come to my mind right now, but it's getting almost the same standard as your culinary water.
E. coli?
E. coli, yeah, E. coli, but they call it coloms or something, there's a word, and, and how they figure that, and it's good. This is all good, I'm in favor of it.
How often does that review, how often are you subject to that review, is that annually?
Um. If I were bigger and I produced a half million dollars a year, I would be reviewed every year. But I can be reviewed anytime, no matter what, and if, and if anybody had a question or. You're open to review any, at any time.
So that sounds like those sound practices will constantly be.
Yeah, any federal agency or state.
Oh, it's not going away.
It's, it's, it sounds like, yeah, different regulatory bodies.
And I'd say, like I'd say, I'm in favor of it, I, I, I'm glad, and if anybody raises fruit and, or vegetables. You ought to be comfortable buying from that farm, knowing that they're under that regulatory, uh, body. Uh, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's really helpful, I, this is a new, this is new for me, so it's, I appreciate the additional information.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're sure welcome.
All right, I see no other people in the room that are not hired by Provo City, so I'm going to safely close public comment. And, um, discuss amongst ourselves. I feel like this is logical, I feel like it's, um, we've answered questions that we had, and I. The only modification I think we maybe would be in agreement on. Is that we would recommend that they allow ten acres regardless of the adjacent properties or their sizes. So that would be.
Yeah, where do we land on the sequencing?
Timing the sequence of that, that's right. So the two things then would be. The, to state that the advisory board reviews it before it goes to the planning commission, and that, uh. You allow ten acres instead of twenty, and then you could just get rid of that second requirement in section forty.
I don't have any definition for sound agricultural practices, but it is a term that's used. Multiple times when it's talking about nuisances in the state code, it, in here, it talks about. Um, civil actions, um, or even criminal actions for a public nuisance, and it says it's a complete. Defense if the action involves act, uh, um, agricultural activities. And then it talks about being able to cite other federal, state, and local laws, um. Uh, where, where there's a, a nuisance claim, um. And then again, they're using that term conducted, conducted according to sound agricultural practices, so that. Looks like that sound agricultural practices topic could be delved into at the state and federal level, and there may be some definitions in. In those other codes.
I, I feel more comfortable with that, like, I, it sounds like all those different agencies have their own codes and regulations that. Fall under sound practices.
All right, commissioners, do we wanna discuss this anymore, or if not, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I just, real quick, that, that ten acres, is that in, in twelve or fifteen?
Zero four zero.
Zero four zero subsection one.
Uh-huh, and then subsection two would also be affected by it, because.
Already has.
It says ten if it's adjacent, so I just think if we change it to ten, it doesn't matter whether it's adjacent or not, we could just get rid of subsection two. Right? Okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Whitlock?
I'd like to make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation for item number two, Development Services requests. An ordinance text amendment to title fifteen, Land Use and Development, to add procedures and requirements related to agricultural protection areas. With two additional, uh, updates to the language, the first requirement being that. We recommend a change from twenty acres to ten under subsection zero forty-one and two. And then the second is that we change the, we add a provision to say that the, uh, agriculture review.
Advisory board?
The Agriculture Advisory Board reviews prior to it coming before the Planning Commission.
That sounds like what I think we heard, okay, do we have a second?
Well, second.
Mr. Knutson has seconded it, so, um, any discussion on the motion as stated? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Whitlock and a second by Mr. Knutson. To forward a positive recommendation for item number two as written with the two additional, um. Modifications to allow ten acres regardless of adjacent property, and, um, to have the advisory board review it before it comes to the planning commission. We'll start with Mr. Whitlock.
Aye.
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 I will also vote aye, so six votes in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation for that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Gonzalez has made a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.